Okay, the next item on the agenda is D2, which is public comments. We have many, many, many speaker cards before us today. So I will ask that you -- I’m going to go with the one-minute rule because we have so many speakers and we have a lot of the business to take care of today. I know many of the speakers will be speaking on the jail issue. Let me just say beforehand that that is not an agenda today. It’s not before the Board, and those actions for the jail will be taken at a later date. So I just want to inform you of that before you come. So I would ask that you would line up as I call your name, and we will go with the one-minute rule. So I apologize to those of you that may have more to say than the one minute, but we will stick to that ruling. And I would ask that you be respectful in your comments and respectful for the time that’s there so all the speakers could get to the mic and make their comments. Okay, the first speaker, Rachel Messner, followed by Carolyn Sims. You could come to the mic, followed by Rob Hope. Okay?
A button on your right that can raise the podium so you don’t have to have it quite so low.
Fancy.
A little bit higher. Where were you comfortable?
Nancy, thank you. Hi, my name is Rachel Messer, and I’m here both as a constituent of Lafayette, California, in District 2 for Supervisor Anderson, and also as a -- yes. And also as a representative here from SURGE Bay Area. SURGE is showing up for racial justice. It’s a national organization, but we have a chapter here in the Bay Area, and SURGE organizes and mobilizes white people to work with a multiracial majority of people to end racism and white supremacy in this country. So I am here representing myself and also SURGE, and I would like to ask the Board of Supervisors to strongly consider what it would mean to have jail expansion in this county. I will say that my friends and family and all of the local business owners that I’ve spoken to in Lafayette are absolutely opposed to jail expansion in Contra Costa. Many of them tell me, “Why would we do that at a time like this, in an extreme xenophobic, racist time? We can rather invest in our communities, invest in mental health services, and invest in human welfare.” Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Adams, and I’m a home care worker for the IHSS. I’m here today to urge you all to vote no on the West County jail expansion. I understand some of you support this project because we believe that providing mental health services within the new jail will be helpful to those with mental illnesses. As a home care worker, I -- excuse me, I’m a bit nervous. As a home care provider who provide care for the mentally ill in this county, I’m telling you that this is not a resolution. Our mentally ill population should not have to be criminalized before receiving the treatment and help that they need. Contra Costa should be spending -- Contra Costa should be spending $25 million on programs like IHSS when actually creating long-lasting stability for the mentally ill. On behalf of the 9,000 home care providers in Contra Costa County who are members of SEIU 2015, we ask you to please think carefully about the decision you make today and vote no on the movement.
Thank you. And again, we are not taking any action as it relates to the jail today. Rob --
Good morning, my name is --
-- will be followed by Frank Runnaway -- Running Horse, okay. And Mr. Brightman, and Pamela Castillo. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Rob Hope. I’m Chief Program Officer at Rubicon Programs. Rubicon Programs is also a member of the Racial Justice Coalition. Over 43 years, Rubicon has been providing services and support to people living with mental illness and also people coming home from incarceration. And we appreciate the county recognizing that people with mental illness are grossly under-resourced in this county, and people are suffering as a result. However, we strongly disagree with the idea that more jail beds is the answer to that problem. Every day, we see how trauma resulting from incarceration makes it more difficult for people to get jobs, housing, and meet their basic needs. More jail beds are not the answer. We strongly urge the county to reconsider the proposal to expand West County jail and instead invest those resources and more services and support for individuals living with mental illness in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank? Is Frank not here? What’s that? Running Horse? Mr. Brightman? Pam Castillo?
I’m to the front.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Quanah Parker-Brightman. I’m Executive Director of United Native Americans, a national Indian organization. And I’ve come here today to advocate for my father, the great Dr. Lehman-Brightman, Chief Lehman-Brightman of the Lakota Nation. And I saw your proclamation just a moment ago. Came aware of that. I applaud you for that. But we must take action in regards to the rampant elder abuse that’s going on in this county. And specifically, I came here to bring voice for my father in regards to his lazy county worker who has been appointed his conservator by the name of Catherine Riso. This woman over there at the Public Guardian Office, which you guys are over, needs to be fired immediately. My father has been -- he has multiple stage-four bedsores that have been rampant going on over there at Kendrick-Wana Creek. I’d like to remind everyone that we have filed numerous complaints of elder abuse that have been documented and validated by the California Department of Public Health regarding the rampant elder abuse at Kendrick-Wana Creek that has gone on far too long. The Department of Justice, through the Elder Justice Initiative, EJI, has won a lawsuit of $125 million against Kendrick. Why does the Contra Costa County Public Guardian Office not take action to move my father to a quality care facility?
Thank you.
Catherine Riso needs to be held accountable for not preventing the multiple-stage-four bedsores that my father is suffering from. He is currently in the ICU because of this elder abuse and fighting for his life. He is on full life support. I just came from the hospital. So if you want to talk about doing something about elder abuse, please take action and fire this lazy county worker immediately, or I will sue this county and make sure that you eat your words. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Running Horse?
Yes, hello. My name is Frank Running Horse. I’ve lived in Concord for over 30 years, and I come today to speak against the expansion of the West County jail. America has the highest incarceration rate per population of any country in the world, including many dictatorships. We don’t need more jails. We need more programs. And I heard that their excuse that they’re using is that they want to help mentally ill people. Well, the best way to help mentally ill people is not to put them in jail. So I think that we should stop expanding our jails and start expanding our education and other opportunities for people that don’t go to jail who are dealing with this the wrong way. Don’t expand the jail.
Bridington? Brightman? Okay, thank you. No, no. The next speaker is Pamela Castillo.
My name is Pamela Castillo. I’ve been an employee of Contra Costa County for 15 and 1/2 years. I’ve also been a resident of 32 years. I’m working currently through the probation department, through the PCU -- I’m so nervous. I’m sorry.
Okay.
My coworker and I, we’ve been informed that we are in the process of being laid off, which becomes effective June 30th, due to the moratorium that has been put in place as of November 1st, where the county has ceased collections on the juvenile services. But the work still remains throughout the county. Originally came from the Office of Revenue, which we collected all matters through the county, other than child support services. Health Services was our largest portfolio that we collected upon. They are currently using a collection agency, which is Rash Curtis. Their contract comes up for renewal on June 30th, and we are asking for that contract to not be renewed, for that work to stay within the county where --
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
We are just begging. We are just begging to stay. I mean, we’ve given our time. We’ve been loyal to this county. We’re asking to stay with the work. We can justify the work. We don’t have to pay the collection agency, which is -- the contract now stands at $1.1 million. Our salaries don’t come to $1.1 million, and we can do this work. We can validate the work before any further actions is taken against this person that’s being billed.
Thank you. Were you next?
She’s part of this.
Did I call your name?
No, you haven’t called my name.
Do you have a speaker card in?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Go ahead and speak.
Okay.
What’s your name?
My name is Diana Wilson, and I am a married employee in good standing with 20 years of service to Contra Costa County. I have been a county resident for 60 years with strong ties to the community. I am currently employed in the probation PCU department as a collection enforcement officer, too. Due to budget cuts within the department, I am being laid off effectively June 30th, 2017. I have remained loyal to Contra Costa County even after a previous layoff from the closure of Office of Revenue Collection. I have been offered alternative employment with the probation department, but that position comes with a cut in pay of $1,000 a month. This would affect my livelihood. I will suffer undue hardship. A difference in pay can make me homeless. At no fault of my own, I have a single household income. We’re not just collectors. We’re actually social workers, too. When we talk to people, when I talk to people on the phone, and I sit up and I tell them where they can be able to find a job, when I talk to people who are sick with health services, you know, we tell them how they can be able to fix things and what have you. You know, we’re here with the county, and the thing else is that we collect the money for the county, and we’re for the public also.
Thank you.
So if you can help us to save our jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are in possession of your letter. Paul Bergerino? Followed by Lynette Wolf?
Good morning, Mr. Jay. Members of the Board and public who are watching. I’m Paul Bergerino from the Contra Costa Clerk Recorder Elections Office. I wanted to announce that we have a photo contest for our voter information guide that we are starting today and running through August 6th. More information can be found on our website at cocovote.us. We had almost 50 people participate when we launched this in 2016. We feel it’s a great way for the public to get involved, and we’re really looking forward to Contra Costa residents showing us their best work. And if there are any questions, once again, feel free to check out our website, and submissions can be sent to outreach@vote.ccccounty.us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Is it Lynette Wolf? Followed by Pat Memes, followed by Bodie? Yep. Followed by Ivan Herrera, followed by Michael Doran.
Yes, I’m Lynette Wolf, and I’m a concerned citizen of Richmond, California. And like everybody concerned about the jail expansion, it is really not needed. Resources are needed in our community. I come from a community where a drug treatment program is shut down. In our neighboring city, San Pablo, a hospital is shut down. We need resources in our community. Our schools are suffering. Homelessness is running rampant in my city. I see it every day. And to build a jail is not helping our community at all. We really need to look at this. This is a problem, and building a jail is not helping anyone but housing people that don’t need to be housed. And following the agenda of Trump’s agenda is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Pat Memes. I come to you wearing three hats today. My first hat is I’m a homeowner in District 1. I say no to building oppressive institutions. Hat number two, as a service provider for Rubicon Programs, I am working with the same people that you say that you’re going to help inside who come home and are homeless outside. Move those resources to housing. We don’t have enough housing for them. And three, as a returning resident who spent over 20 years of incarceration, how dare you build another oppressive system that will hold people? If you don’t change the culture inside that system, that system will remain a system of oppression.
Thank you.
That system will remain a system that will hold people. It was built over 200 years ago.
Thank you.
And guess where people of my color were? Enslaved. Thank you.
Morning.
My name is Brody Hilk. I’m a resident of Danville, where I’ve lived for 33 years. I remember being in the PTA, and for years and years, we would say, “Our state pays more for jails and prisons and on public schools, and it’s just not right.” That statement rings true for today also. Why spend $70 million of state funds and $20 million of county funds on a jail building? People have said that the jails are overcrowded, yet the sheriff said that the new jail expansion will not add one more jail cell. Moreover, if Senator Nancy Skinner’s proposed legislation to reform the bail bond system becomes law, there will be fewer people in jail. People have said that this will help the mentally ill, yet the jail expansion will house 400 men with, listen carefully, one psychiatrist, one mental health clinician, who apparently is not even a certified therapist. There are some other counselors, but they won’t be doing therapy. In fact, there’ll be virtually no one, well, two people, to do therapy. People have said the proposed jail expansion is great for the mentally ill because there will be individual therapy rooms and group therapy rooms. That sounds nice, but if you look at the building plan, you’ll see the 32-bed unit for severely mentally ill and the 64-bed detox unit have no such rooms. It’s quite obvious that the selling point, that this is a jail to help the mentally ill, is a false one. The mentally ill are not going to improve in this jail setting.
Thank you.
$25 million is a great deal of money.
Thank you, ma’am.
There are better uses. Let’s build halfway houses, diversion facilities overseen by judges, where the mentally ill can experience actual therapy. I hope you will reconsider your support and vote against the jail expansion.
Thank you. Hold on a moment. One of the things we’re not going to do is disrespect the process that I put in place. Now, we’re willing to listen to you, each and every one of you. I’ve asked you to make your comments to one minute, and I would appreciate if you respect the one-minute rule that’s in place today. We have many speakers here and a lot of other business to take care of. So let’s be respectful to the process. Ivan?
Can I have 20 seconds more, please?
So you will have a minute, and you could start now.
Good morning, county supervisors and staff. My name is Ivan Herrera, and I am a father and a Concord resident, a member of Central County Regional Group. We are a group of parents leader working to create a safe, healthy, and a just county for all families. Today, I came to you to ask, please, vote no on the jail expansion. The jail expansion is an investment that not only has an economic cost, but also a social and moral one. We are investing in the wrong place. Families in Contra Costa succeed when they have the necessary resources in the community to learn and grow without barriers. What we need are programs for the children to support, to succeed in school, programs to help with the trauma, and investment in creating healthy and safety communities. The decisions you make today will impact the future generations to come. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Doran. I’m a resident of Brentwood, California. I’ve got a degree in human development, and I’m here to tell you that there is stigma when you receive mental health services in a penitentiary or a jail type of setting. You’re not going to help people develop and get better over a longer term by doing it inside of a jail. There’s a lot of anger around this issue, and I really implore you to listen to what your community is saying to you and to focus the money that you receive and that you can spend into proper diversion programs that will take care of people, that will help people, that will develop people, and get them in the right track of life, instead of just keeping them into a cycle of negativity within a penitentiary type of system. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Melvin Willis? He will be followed by Megan from the Asian Pacific -- I’m not English.
Melvin Willis, Richmond resident, ACE organizer, and part of the Richmond City Council. Each and every day that goes by, I get more emails and more people coming out against the jail expansion. Just last week, I got an email from the El Cerrito branch of the NAACP with their letter against the jail expansion. The last time we came here, there was probably maybe like 30, 40 people here, and the more and more this issue continues, the more the numbers and opposition grow because people do not want to see over $20 million and over $5 million every year invested in mass incarceration, invested into an institution that promotes racism. When we need education, we need mental health outside. We need to make sure people have the resources they need outside of the jail and make sure that we’re having resources to prevent recidivism. Each time you vote, each time you vote in support of this jail, you’re just slapping your community in its face. Listen to your constituents, all of them coming from all over the county. Reconsider this proposal and reject the jail expansion. Don’t give the sheriff what he wants, and don’t be intimidated by him. Thank you.
Megan?
My name is Megan Zapanta, and I’m a community organizer with the Asian Pacific Environmental Network. Our organization has been organizing low-income Asian immigrants and refugees in Richmond for almost 25 years. Most of our members who are refugees from Laos, who moved to this country to flee war and violence. They thought they would find a safe, healthy, and peaceful place to raise their families. Instead, they found themselves breathing in the toxic fumes of Chevron, living in neighborhoods without adequate health, care, education, and job services. Our communities are already overpoliced and underserved. Investing in prisons and policing doesn’t make our communities feel safer. It reinforces the violence and the trauma that they fled. And we urge you to vote no on the West County jail expansion and to instead invest in the services, health, and education that will actually make our communities safer. Thank you.
Hamash Kamare? Mr. Kamare? Yes. Followed by James Hinton?
Yeah, good morning, Chair and the Board of Supervisor and all the staff. I’m here from three angles. One, I’m resident of Concord for last more than 25 years. Second, I’m part of the Interfaith Council of Contra Costa County. Third, I’m a candidate for state governor. Fourth, I’m a mental health professional. And I’m the first one who started the nonprofit mental health agency in Concord in ’93 to serve those people, those who are becoming homeless in ’93. And we do need more housing. Even AB 109 funding you got, only 30% of that funding went to housing and services. The rest of that funding went to administrative costs. We need to not start a welfare system for intellectuals and bureaucrats. We need to give money to people where it belongs. So please invest in housing, mental health services, and also in the caring of people, not in the discarding of people.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. James Hinton. Three years ago in three days, I won the U.S. House of Representatives primary for District 5 to go to Washington, D.C. In November, I received over 40,000 votes against Congressman Mike Thompson urging us to build schools rather than prisons. The rest of District 5, Napa, Solano, Sonoma County, were very unhappy with how you are cooperating with ICE nowadays. Here in California, that’s outrageous. And recently, the L.A. Times had an article yesterday that says, “It costs more money to put somebody in jail in California than it does to send them to Harvard.” So, you know, enough is enough with the cronyism. We do not need to be building any more jails. We need to educate our population.
Pam Ramirez, followed by Claudia Jimenez, followed by Edith Pastore.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Pam Ramirez. I’m here on behalf of CNA, but I have a history of working, first job out of college in a prison, second job for the welfare department, third for a law school, and now as an RN. I have seen in that broad scope of employment, the inhumanity in prisons, the reason for incarceration basically being mental health and poverty. I am here to encourage you to reevaluate the taking of money and putting it into more incarceration. I have 500 signatures that have been gathered on behalf of -- against the expansion of the jail. I’m also a Richmond resident. I see our communities. We need more services. We’re in a hospital desert. We need money to go to health services and mental health services and drug diversion programs, not an expansion of jail to put immigrants into -- immigrants and others into prison.
Thank you. Claudia Jimenez, followed by Edith, and Marjorie Wallace.
My name is Claudia Jimenez, CNA community organizer, and just here saying, the things that you are doing are making us stronger. Every day, we are having more and more people, and not just from Richmond, from Concord, from East County, Brentwood, from Martinez, and from your district Supervisor Anderson. And we know that you don’t want to listen to us. That you just want to listen to the sheriff. Despite the opposition to the jail, you continue to send emails trying to say to us how great this jail expansion is. You have to listen to us. But we are here. We are ready. 2018 is around the corner, right? It’s around the corner. But before I finish, I want to say, before -- I want you to respond to my email. I want you to respond to my email. So you commit, before you take this decision, you commit to two things. First, the county needs an independent jail assessment that just look not only that the jail is the option, but can be other options for the overcrowding and for providing mental health services. And the other thing is a budget assessment. We need to know, the public need to know, the fiscal impact of this jail, not just for this year, but over.
Thank you. Edith? Followed by Marjorie Wallace. Okay?
Good morning. My name is Edith Pastron. I'm a resident of Richmond, community organizer with ACE. Sorry, I have a sore throat. So I'm here today because, again, I am imploring you to think about your decision about the West County Detention Facility Expansion. All these people that are here are only a fraction of the folks who we've talked to that are against this project. I don't want to take up too much time because I want to hear what other people are saying. But we're going to continue organizing and like Claudia Jimenez said, we're only getting stronger by the minute and more people are looking at you guys. More people are watching and we will remember. We will remember how you vote on this jail expansion. So yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Wallace?
Yes. Good morning, supervisors. I'm Marjorie Wallace and I'm a longtime resident of Martinez, so I'm in Mr. Glover's district. And I'm here with the racial justice people and also my church, the Mount Diablo Unitarian Universalists, who are the yellow shirt people. And I have to say, I have never been in this room before. I am not a political activist by any means, but this issue of jail expansion has so inflamed me. I am so opposed to it. And I'm a mother and I see the effects of the cuts on mental health. I live near the Juvenile Hall detention and I know, and I heard, I'm an employment attorney and I heard people from this county who are doing useful work begging not to be laid off. I mean, this is a matter of services, not cells. Thank you.
Okay. Next group of people I would like to line up is Sandra Johnson. Rodi McCoy, I'm not sure if that's right. Jerry Ellis. And Natalie Marquez. Okay?
Hi. My name is Sandra Johnson and I'm a member of All of Us Are None and I'm also a formerly incarcerated woman. And I'm here today to oppose the expansion of the new jail because I'm just wondering if one of you guys had a family member that you love with mental illness and they had a run-in with the law, would you want them to be locked up in jail without the added care of a mental health worker? Or would you truly want them to receive the care that they need to receive in order to help them with their mental illness? You know, I just, you know, I'm sure that each one of you guys would fight for your loved one that you had to be cared for. I've been in jail. I've been locked up with people with mental illness and jail is not where they're receiving help.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Rodi McCoy. I'm wearing two hats today as a black man in America and specifically Contra Costa County. And I work for Rubicon Programs and Director of Services for Contra Costa County. Point one I want to make very, very quickly. They're speaking very loudly. Jails is not the appropriate place to receive mental health services. Please stop the charade. More than 2 million people found themselves behind bars at the end of the 21st century and they were regulated to the margins of mainstream society, banished to a political and social system not unlike Jim Crow, where they were discriminated against in housing, employment, health, and educationally. And all this was deemed perfectly illegal at the time. The system functioned perfectly, okay? And the prevailing system of racial meanings, identities, and ideologies all seemed natural. 90% of the people were of color, black and Latino people. So yet, the mass incarceration of communities of color was explained in race-neutral terms. This is a racist policy that needs to be dealt with and it's not about the appropriate place to put services in jails.
Jerry Ellis? Followed by Ms. Marquez.
Yes, my name is Jerry Elster. I work for Rubicon. I'm the connections manager. I'm the connections manager today. Yesterday, I was a formerly incarcerated person or I was a prisoner and now I'm formerly incarcerated. There is so much I could have benefited from other resources when I came out. I was left to deal with things on my own. It took less than, what, $30,000,000 to get my bachelor's degree, to get me to where I am today? How much more of that could go toward creating other peoples like the Tamisha Walkers who runs the Safe Return Project in Richmond? How much more can we get the Larnell Wolf's you got that stood up here today and talked to you? These are people that at one time in society that they had deemed incorrigible and myself, who now is a PhD candidate. I say that the solutions, we need to find alternatives to incarceration, first of all, and I don't envy your position. I know this is a precarious position that you guys sit in. I appeal to you to look at the audience. Pay attention. This is only just a fraction.
Thank you. Mrs. Marquez will be followed by Joseph Johnson and Tarnell Abbott.
Hello, my name is Natalia Marquez and I am with All of Us Are None. The supervisor and the sheriff claim to support the $95 million jail expansion because it will provide mental health care. Mental health care does not belong in prison. Research shows that community-based mental health care is both less expensive and more importantly, it is more effective than in prison. Two years ago, 31-year-old Michael Tyree was brutally beaten to death in Santa Clara County in jail for having a mental episode. Prisons are not equipped to deal with mental illness. Why do we treat the mentally ill like criminals instead of giving them the care that they need? Thank you.
My name is Tarnell Abbott and I'm a homeowner and I vote in this county. I do not want my money to be spent on the jail expansion. This proposal will take millions of dollars from the county budget at the cost of social services. I want you to end the contract with ICE. This will open up 200 beds. This war against poor people, homeless people, mentally ill people, and people of color and refugees must stop here and now. The fact that Sheriff Livingston threatened to pull services from El Cerrito because that city voted against the expansion is a clear sign that you should fire him now.
Excuse me. Those type of outbreaks will allow me the opportunity to adjourn this meeting. So please, be respectful. Be respectful. We are listening to you. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I'm Joseph Johnson from All of Us Are None. I'm also with Legal Service, Prisoners with Children. And I'd just like to appeal to your moral side. I mean, we're in this thing together. You know, we're trying to find answers. And if you already made your decision, I would like to just weigh in on what I'm about to say. And the fact is that there's a problem with locking people up and punishing people. The thing is, we got to come up with better solutions. We've been doing this for years and you see where we're going with it. It's not, we're not coming up with any solutions on this. So we're going to have to look at this thing from an objective view in saying that this is not working. And all we're saying here and all the people saying here, let's give it a chance of working with people and doing what's right so we can all, you know, come out this thing in a positive, you know, production. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speakers will be, and if you would, line up, Nancy Kelly, Albert Ponce, Julie Davis, Marty Roach. If you would come forward. Nancy Kelly?
Good morning. I am the chair of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Berkeley in Kensington. As a former public defender and deputy county council who dealt with the mental health calendar in Fresno County, as I've said to you before, building a maximum security jail and billing it as a mental health facility is ludicrous. Only $750,000 is part of this proposal for any mental health staff while millions is proposed for correctional officers who have no training with mentally ill people. The same funds should, would be much more effectively used in preventive services. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Davis. I'm a constituent of Supervisor Candace Anderson. I have a couple of points that I'd like to address. Number one, Contra Costa County does have a choice. Are we going to spend our scarce taxpayer dollars to perpetuate a broken system that uses jails as a substitute for mental health facilities? Or are we going to explore alternative strategies that will be less expensive, more productive, and more humane? Expanding the jail cannot be the only option. There needs to be more conversation. Number two, I have a question about the ICE contract. There needs to be a detailed analysis of the fiscal impact of the ICE contract. According to the Office of the California Financial Analyst, the average daily cost to incarcerate a person in California is $194. Sheriff Livingston states that he nets $3 million annually from a $6 million contract to house, oops. The numbers don't add up. Let me just say that. You need to look at it.
Thank you. Marty?
Marty Roach. Good morning, supervisors. I'm Marty Roach. I live in Maraga and I also am here as part of the La Merinda Peace and Justice Group. I'm here to oppose the jail expansion and also to call for ending the contract with ICE, which is filling up beds in our county that we shouldn't be involved in, in my opinion. So the county does face a choice. Many people have said it. But we can either invest in a healthy community and supporting healthy alternatives for individuals or we can continue to unravel our safety net and I think that's what the Jail Detention Center would do. The best investment of our limited funds should be in prevention services, including mental health, treatment, job training, and youth services. We want to keep people out of the criminal justice system. If we build a new facility, we're setting in motion incentives to fill the facility to cover costs. That's setting a vicious cycle that we don't want. We want the alternative. Many studies confirm the cost-effectiveness of prevention and I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Albert? He will be followed by Mrs. Kamare and Katie Lynn, Geneva Smith, Cecilia Lewis.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Albert Ponse. I'm a resident of Martinez. I'm also a professor of political science at Diablo Valley College and I'm here to stand in opposition to this jail. And I also want to remind us and all the supervisors present of our ethical responsibility to provide a community that enhances the possibilities for humans to fulfill their potentiality, not to denigrate human potentiality by locking them up. So what we need here at this specific historic juncture is really to reevaluate our ethical obligation to our community and what we want to see, how our community ought to be, not how it is, not by the dictates of pure empirical data based on numbers and on profit. We want to build the potential for humans to prosper, not to denigrate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shavani Kumar.
And I'm Katie Lynn and we are here from District 2 as a part of the organization Together We Will and its youth action group, also a part of the Racial Justice Coalition.
We are here because we want to speak up for other young adults in our county and ask you, our county supervisors, to place that priority on programs to keep youth on the right track instead of a path to prison. We know being from District 2, we have the benefit of being able to participate in many different activities and community programs because we are privileged and that our parents can provide them to us. As citizens, we know that not everyone has these educational opportunities and we believe we should be expanding educational opportunities and programs to the youth everywhere in our county. That's why it's important for us as young adults to stand here before you and ask that you choose to provide services, not cells. Thank you.
Thank you. Geneva Smith? Miranda? Followed by Cecilia Lucas?
I would like to have my speech spoken by our minister, Leslie Takahashi.
Okay, she will be coming up.
Yes, thank you.
Leslie? Reverend Leslie?
Thank you. Thank you, supervisors. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration of this issue. I am not here again to waste your time. I am not here because I have nothing else to do with mine, I promise you. I'm here because this issue has become a great moral issue for our county in our times. And I'm here to stand with those who are asking you to appoint an independent assessment of the jail expansion project and to look at it in light of canceling the contract that the sheriff has currently with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. We should not be, even in a time when we so desperately need resources for our vital public services, we should not be allowing the incarceration of human beings to be a revenue stream for our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cecilia Lucas, faculty at UC Berkeley and resident of Richmond. Jail expansion actually began when the 13th Amendment outlawed slavery except in the case of incarceration and thus ushered in the criminalization of dark-skinned people in what we now call mass incarceration in the prison industrial complex, the incredibly lucrative set of businesses and careers that have replaced the incredibly lucrative slavery system. But the fact of the matter is that the vast majority of people who are in jail are not a threat to society. You voting to expand the jail, however, is a very large threat to society. If you want to deal with overcrowding and mental health, the humane and cost-effective way to do that is to release people from jail. Jails destroy the lives of incarcerated people and the lives of their families and communities. When you vote for jail, you are destroying lives. The irony is that you don't get sent to jail for your act that actually does threaten society and destroys so much more than the acts that have sent most incarcerated people to jail. It takes courage to change your opinion. Ask yourself, if you're a spiritual person, would your God approve of incarceration as a way to solve problems? If you don't believe in God, examine your deepest values and consider whether voting for jails is really in integrity with those values. There is a different way that can serve life in our community. There is a different way that can serve life in our community.
The next lineup of speakers, we have Giovanna from Baypoint, followed by Lucy Riley, followed by Nancy Yabera, followed by Jennifer Hubbard. Giovanna, welcome.
Hi guys, so Giovanna Fajardo from Baypoint. This is Damian, also from Baypoint. We're here with a group of residents here in Contra Costa. Sadly, we don't have that many people here from Baypoint, but I know last weekend we celebrated the reopening of the community pool that was shut down for years. Sorry, I just ran after him. We need services. We need programs. I've been looking up schools for my son. He's now a year and a half. Our schools in Baypoint are rated 1 to 2 out of 10. It's one of the lowest graded schools in test scores in the whole state. Our county, our communities, our schools need funding for our children, not more cells, not more beds for people to be incarcerated. That's not gonna help the community, that's not gonna help our families, that's not gonna help our kids. So, think about our families, think about the education and the services we do need and the programs we do need. Thank you.
Good morning Supervisors. My name is Lucy Riley, and I'm a Richmond homeowner, also a member of the California Nursing Association. What I hold before me is a petition with 500 nurses' names on it that I would like to submit to the Board, and I would like to read the proclamation from over 500 nurses that work in the Bay Area that are sharing this message on mass incarceration with all of their friends and fellow homeowners and fellow voters. Dear Members of Board of State and Community Corrections of Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors, as registered nurses of Contra Costa County, we oppose the construction of a new jail at the West County Detention Facility in Richmond, California, at the expense of the rest of the community. The Sheriff's proposal to use the new jail facility as a treatment center for the mentally ill is short-sighted in a community that has many needs for all its residents. County and state funds should be invested in meeting the needs of our community, such as affordable housing, jobs, education, and access to healthcare and mental health care, not jail expansion.
Julie Weatherly? Followed by Nancy Yabera? You could just stand there, and you're coming up. You're coming up.
Hi, this isn't my first time up here to try to get a couple of you to change your minds about the jail expansion. Today, I won't even try, because it is obviously pointless. You made up your minds long ago, as those of us in the community begged and worked to bring a sense of heart to your minds. I'm giving up on that one for now. But let me tell you, we do have hearts, we do have minds, and you are wrong. At this point, I want to focus on where my energy is these days. After a lifetime of being politically active and seeing time and again, from both a personal and professional perspective, how little those in power care about us down here, I commit to speaking out against you for the rest of my life. Your vision for this county goes against everything I believe in, everything I have spent my life working for, but I'm not through yet. I have your numbers, and I will be back, time and time again. You will not lock up my mind, you will not deport my heart and soul. I will be here to continue to search for yours. We are woke, dear, powerful ones, and you haven't seen anything yet.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jennifer Huber from El Sabranti, and I haven't given up, so I plead with you to listen to your constituents, to listen to us, because you're our representatives. This is not a free jail, and we can't afford it. There are better ways to address overcrowding. We need to reform the bail system. Seventy-five percent of the inmate population is pre-trial, and legislature currently is reforming this system, so it doesn't make sense to invest millions of dollars in the new jail cells now. We also need to stop cooperating with ICE to free up beds. To quote Nancy Skinner, "California doesn't need to pay for federal ICE beds." There's better ways to provide mental health services, and only 17% of the new facility would even be used for these. It's more effective to fund critical services to prevent new further incarceration. This isn't just a West County problem. Polls reported in the East Bay Times, your constituents here, show that the majority of all of your constituents throughout the county oppose the jail expansion. So, I plead with you to vote for your community.
And, excuse me, what was the name again?
Jennifer Huber.
Okay, thank you Jennifer.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Yabara. I am a pretty organizer with Cisco, and I am a Richmond resident. I come here before you guys today because it feels like to me that you guys are acting more of like the oppressors than my representatives, and the people that are supposed to be representing us. The people here come today before you guys, and we've been coming, and we're gonna keep coming, letting you guys know that we're against the jail expansion. We don't want it, but yeah, you guys are still willing to go through with it. I hope that you guys consider it though. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Kerr, followed by Julie Weatherly.
I'm Michael Kerr, Baypoint. I'm a member of the Diablo Green Party and Veterans for Peace. I oppose wasting money, millions of dollars, on the West County jail expansion. I also oppose and hope it will end collaboration with ICE program. The county needs priority of, we need more services, need to address serious issues of lack of affordable housing and lack of livable wages and income. These issues create homelessness, desperate people trying to survive. I share my home with people on SSI and Social Security. Many no longer can afford to even rent a room in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next group will be Kimberly Gamble, followed by Lilly Haskell. She's here, Kimberly. Followed by Lilly.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Gamble. I'm with the Safe Return Project, and I'm also a mother, and I'm also formerly incarcerated. As you all know, we have disparities with homelessness, housing, employment, education, and I really would like for you guys to take in consideration not having a jail expansion. As a mother who is not reunited with her children and is looking for housing, because that's the only barrier that I have, I would like to think that the only vacancy available to me is not a jail cell. I would also like to know that services will be provided for myself and my children, other families and their children, people with mental illnesses as well. And another note that I would like you to know is that mental illness does come from being incarcerated. I didn't have these issues until I was incarcerated. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Smoot. I'm gonna speak now because I'm speaking with Lilly. I'm here representing--
Excuse me, you're Karen?
Karen Smoot.
Okay.
Yes. I'm here from San Francisco, Sidien County actually, and I'm part of the No New SF Jail Coalition. I also represent Critical Resistance. I'm here to talk about how San Francisco County rejected its jail funding from the BSCC in 2015 as a result of similar outpouring of community support against jails and for services. In 2015, we successfully convinced the Board of Supervisors to unanimously reject BSCC funding on the basis that we don't want to spend further money on expanding the criminal legal system and incarceration, and instead we want to turn that money towards community-based health services. And also, this coincided with, and was probably, their decision was probably due in part to the killing of Mario Woods by San Francisco Police Department. He was formerly incarcerated and left prison, left the jail system with severe mental health issues that resulted in his targeting by the police department. And so, we just want to present a few pieces of information that we produce as a coalition that are evidence of how you can--
Thank you, and you can give it to the clerk.
--how you can direct funding towards services that work and why our county Supervisors rejected the funding.
Thank you.
As Karen mentioned, my name is Lilly. I'm with the No New San Francisco Jail Coalition as well. As Karen mentioned--
Her name is what?
Lilly Haskell. San Francisco rejected jail funding from the Board of State and Community Corrections. It's not too late for Contra Costa to do the same. After San Francisco rejected that funding, they embarked on a long process, a year of investigation that was built on prior investigations, some of the reports you'll see, that was a joint collaborative effort in the, in the community between public health departments, the sheriffs, community members, social service providers, people who are working on reentry, to talk about the issues that are facing the community and how we can depopulate the jails. This, this is a numbers issue, but each and every single number is a family member, is a loved one of someone in our communities, but these are numbers, you're talking about 400 people, 400 people that we love and care about deeply, but 400 people who could be let out of jail if you talked about bail bond reform, if you talked about law enforcement assisted diversion, if you talked about ending your ICE contract, if you put resources into the community where they belong for mental health, for substance use, for, for education and housing and healthcare.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you.
And just on the, just to add on the note of conversation, people are here to--
Thank you. You have a minute. David Mailer, followed by Chelsea from Walnut Creek, Anita Johnson, and Norley Larky.
David Mailer. Okay, the reason I'm asking is, when I was 18, I joined the US Navy to get away from abusive family. When I got out, I was 100% disabled from hearing loss. I've been sitting here, not being able to hear one person speak, because there's no captions. Why? Why is this? Okay. When I got out of the Navy, I couldn't get a job. I started dealing marijuana and got busted. I spent nine months of a one-year sentence. Jail did nothing for me, except waste my time, make me angry, and four years later, I got busted again. I still smoke marijuana. Jail did nothing for me. You guys are wasting your time, but I would like to say, thank you very much for paying attention to all these people speaking. It's a very important issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chelsea, and she will be followed by Anita Johnson, Norley Larky, Maria Allegria.
Hi, my name is Sharice Kound, and I live in Walnut Creek in District 4. I'm a parent of young school-aged children, and my background is in engineering, public administration, affordable housing, and education policy. It's been said in California that prison capacity needs in the future can be predicted from third grade reading test scores. Well, I can tell you, I've worked with those kids in 10 of the schools throughout Mount Diablo School District, helping them learn to read, and with a simple investment of time and care, students jumped an entire grade level in just a few months. We all know that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Budgets are statements of our values. I encourage you to look at this not as a decision based on because the money is there, but as looking at a holistic view of your overall budget and analyzing, are we truly investing in our families, in education, in prevention, and in diagnosing and treating mental health before it becomes a crisis? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Anita Johnson. I'm from Walnut Creek. A budget is a moral document. The individuals in our county that are afflicted with mental illness need services, and it's the responsibility, the moral responsibility of our county to provide that services, those services. So, I'm asking you to make the right decision, invest in services, not cells. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Norie, N-O-R-I-E, Clark, C-L-A-R-K-E. I presume that's who you were calling for.
Well, the seat was running in the air there, so.
So, anyway, I want, I am here, and I am representing the Unitarian Universalist Church in Kensington, the Social Justice Council, and I'm asking you to reject, I'm, I'm asking you to oppose the expansion of the Contra Costa jail and to reject the money that is being offered to you. We want to see an open dialogue and analysis of the full budget for this expansion. We want to use the five-plus million taxpayer dollars for the operating budget to lock up the mentally ill and the poor, to be diverted for services for these people. I'm asking you, use the money for diversion and a method for replacing the bond system, which results in lacking, locking up the poor, resulting in loss of jobs and homelessness, though not even convicted. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Maria Allegria, and I stand before you as a proud Democrat, representing 311,000 Democrats in Contra Costa County as Chair of the Democratic Party, and I'm here to say, on behalf of the Democratic Party of Contra Costa County, we urge you to reject this $75 million from the state and $25 million of general fund money. I just want to make two points, because I only have probably 30 seconds. There is a recent poll that said that 70% of Contra Costa residents support shifting the investment from the Sheriff's Department to community reinvestment policies. That means funding for mental health, after-school programs, employment opportunities to vulnerable populations. And only 13% believe that the best way to make our community safer is to invest in a prison system, and a plurality of voters oppose--
Thank you.
--the West County jail expansion. These are residents of Contra Costa County that believe that you should reject--
Thank you.
--the jail expansion. Thank you.
Rita Baruff, from Richmond. Rita will be followed by Lois, and it's all running together here, so I'll say currently.
Good morning Supervisors. It is really clear that you're hearing from a wide array of voices from all of your districts, and we are really-- and we are really imploring you to hear the questions that are unresolved. An assessment is essential, I'm sorry, I represent, I'm also here from SEIU 1021, and I'm a Contra Costa voter. It's, I want to employ you to hear the voices of your constituents. We're only representing those that could get away from work, away from school, and away from their responsibilities of eldercare, which is part of what I do. My mother, who lives in Walnut Creek, feels as strongly as I do that a jail, the jail expansion is not the answer. As a medical-social worker, I know that it's community-based mental health services and housing and jobs that help people avoid getting into deep patterns of, of mental illness. And I, you need to have the courage, please, have the courage to, to have a vision and hear what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Lois?
I'm Lois, Lois Heaney. Thank you, supervisor.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a resident of Richmond, a parent of a young adult with mental illness, so this is personal, a legal consultant, and a member of the Supportive Housing Coalition of the East Bay. Sheriff Livingston's claims that the jail expansion will address mental health issues is little more than a bone. It is window dressing to justify an unjust jail expansion. We need care, not cages, for people with mental illness. We need to stop criminalizing mental illness, homelessness, and drug addiction. We need to reform the bail system so that pretrial release is not a system based on class and access to money, which results in poor people sitting in pretrial incarceration or bankrupting families while enhancing the bail bond system. The prison-jail industrial complex, whether it is public or private, fails miserably. The U.S. is the most incarcerated country in the world. I oppose building more cages to support ICE and the wrong-headed ideas of Donald Trump and Jeff Sessions. We have jails overcrowding because of three strikes and mass incarceration, and it's time to stop that.
Thank you. Okay, my next lineup of speakers is Susan Llewellyn, followed by Willie Mims.
Good morning. My name is Suzanne Llewellyn. I'm a 26-year resident of Walnut Creek, and I am a member of the Mount Diablo Unitarian Universalist Church, and a member also of our Social Justice Council. And there are many of us here in the audience today wearing these yellow shirts, and I can tell you that the faith community is mobilized against this because we view it as a moral issue. And like everybody else who has spoken over and over to you, we ask you to please look in your heart and have the courage to vote against this jail expansion, even though you supported it the last time around. I ask you, do you feel that you five people have the right to determine, or you, I should say, yes, how this vote will go? Or is it us who have the right to be represented by you? So please, listen to what we're saying and vote no.
Willie Mims, followed by Tamika Walker, to Supervisor Glover and the rest of the supervisors. Willie Mims, representing, not representing, but a member of the East County NAACP and also Pittsburgh Black Political Association. I am in District 5, where my esteemed Supervisor Glover is. I stand here today with the people to stand against any future jail consideration. Jail expansion has never reduced incarceration, just the opposite. Jails are nothing but a 19th, 20th, and 21st century version of an attractive nuisance. What do you do with an attractive nuisance? You get rid of it. So we don't need any jails. I urge, I urge these board members to have the moral courage and intellectual heart to do the right thing. I urge you to listen to the, and hear the cries of the people, and to never forget that it was the people who put you in office, and you are elected to serve the people, not the sheriff, who will serve and represent somebody else. Thank you. Tamika Walker, followed by Rachel.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Tamisha Walker. I'm an Antioch resident and a homeowner and a voter. I don't know what else to say. What I do want to say is to Mrs. Diane Burgess is that my brother was sentenced to 90 days in Martinez last week. He's been incarcerated for almost over 30 days. My mom has been asking for mental health and drug addiction services, not arrests and not incarceration, for over a year. There's no resources for him in our community. This is a stressful situation for my family. We do not feel like we are rescued by his incarceration. We feel further traumatized. He has not received any drug addiction or mental health services while he's been in Martinez. He needs services in his community where he belongs with his family. The county's idea of rehabilitation is $134 for breathalyzer
Thank you.
a day. That's $12,000 that my family cannot afford over the next 90 days. We do not need to incarcerate people who we love. We need to treat them in our community.
Rachel, Rachel Tomas, Rachel Tomas, I know I got that wrong, but she's, no?
Let's try Rachel Tomachoff. Is that closer? Is there a Rachel here? Rachel T., any Rachel T.? Okay.
Okay, we will go with Sharon Peterson, followed by Wendy Hershey.
Just like to echo what the last speaker said. If you've ever had a loved one or a friend who had mental health issues in this county, try to get them some help without criminal involvement, without the judicial system. It's an impossibility. Those beds in the ICE expansion jail, they are not what we need. Please listen to your community. We are listening to you, and we are watching, and 2018 is right around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Richmond City Councilwoman, Jevaka Bechtel. Is she still here?
I'm Wendy Hershey from Concord. Is a new jail really the answer, the best answer for the conditions in Martinez? A majority of your constituents, and years of history, don't think so. Thank you for putting your faces in the spotlight and accepting the heavy responsibility you bear. I bet you thought many times about what your vision is for Contra Costa County. Currently, the United States locks up more people than any other country in the world. Is that, is perpetuating this part of your vision? The cost of mass incarceration isn't just the price of a new jail paid for by men and women who work hard. It's not just the $75,000 a year it costs to house each inmate, and it's not cutting off services to people who temporarily and long-term need them. The cost is having the hard proof that we don't know what we're doing as a society. We may not have the answers, but a majority of the people who voted for you know that a new jail isn't it.
Thank you.
I'm not finished.
Thank you.
The airplane is off the tarmac, and it's flying very erratically right now, and most people of reason can see that we're not headed to a good place if people don't fight back and resist the pilot and the co-pilots.
Thank you.
I have to say this, but I feel like the four of you are flight attendants on this airplane.
Sharon Peterson? Okay, thank you. Hey, our next speaker will be, is Jevaka here? Our next speaker will be Daniel, is it Michael? No?
I don't need to speak. Plenty of other voices for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Kelly Haskell? Lilly, I'm sorry. Followed by Carol Johnson?
I'm Jerry Inberg from San Pablo, unincorporated, and I've been following this really closely. I think it's really important. And I hear mostly the reason for approving or supporting the expansion is about the mental health care, and, but I'm hearing very, very few specifics. It's almost like I hear more mental health care, good, and that's almost all I hear. I called around a month or two ago around behavioral health and ultimately found out that's not who administered it. To find out even who administers mental health care in the jail, there's very little information. I must have made 40 calls. Sheriff's Office didn't know. Supervisor's Offices didn't know. And I, there's almost nothing online. I think a lot of people want a transparent review of this before just throwing money at it. I did, like a few people say, said, "Look at the proposal," and it does say one psychiatrist and one clinician is in the budget for the jail expansion, and I don't understand how that translates into widely reduced recidivism. I just want to end with this question that I asked last week. Are you researching this? Because it's really complicated. And could you go against the sheriff if it seemed like it was in the interest of, in your constituents? Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Johnson, followed by Marco Benet.
Okay, so I just want to make three quick points. First, I want to thank everybody for coming, and thank you all for listening. But the first point is that the, this jail expansion will not be able to accommodate the hundreds of inmates who have mental health needs if there is only a capacity for 25 or 30 inmates. That's crazy. And the second one is that if this jail expansion is such a great idea, why is not one individual, not one organization showing up to speak in support of the jail expansion? That should tell you something. And my third point is that his, I will reiterate the fact that whoever supports going against the people, ignoring what the voters want, what the constituents wants, we will remember at election time. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Marcos Vanyales, resident in Richmond, co-chair of Richmond Progressive Alliance. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the expansion of the West Contra County Detention Facility. We, as an organization, believe that this is not a good choice. This provides a wrong message to our communities. I think we need to stop that criminalization of Black and Brown people in our communities. What we need actually, yeah, I understand, and we agree, is mental health services. But mental health services in our community, we need mental health services to prevent our community to go to jail. Remember, yes, and also, we need services for health, education, and affordable housing. We believe that a lot of these people, if we provide the main services in our community, we can avoid people to go to jail. So please reconsider this decision because we know all your constituents are here, and we're going to see you in the next election day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all. I wanted to address specifically Supervisor Burgess again, because I know this is a personal issue for you, but also because I get still almost weekly calls from folks, mostly from Antioch, but folks in your district in general, and they keep asking me, like, "So did that friendly lady who promised to protect our families change her mind yet about the jail expansion?" And I would love to give them some good news that, yeah, you know, she came, she's on our side now. I know, you know, the threat of losing votes is always real from both ends of the spectrum, right? But I also wanted to let you know that, you know, we'll have your back if you do decide to turn your back on the sheriff and those folks upstairs, you know? We, the community, everyone you see here and everyone out in the community will have your back, and we'll, you know, forgive you for your, you know, temporary bad, bad decision. But, um, but I also really wanted to, real quick, real quick, wanted to let all y'all know that no one comes here for disrespect, right? And it's really hard, really hard, difficult to respect a system that's put like, then there are 3 million people in incarceration. And so, we come here to solve that, not to disrespect anybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to help federal with this one, because I think
This is a tough one.
This is a tough one. Okay, so, and when you come up, you have to pronounce it for us. Rusko Kayengayano. Am I close?
Yep.
At least, we got you up here. So now you have to tell us how to really pronounce your name. It's a beautiful name.
Good morning, Board. My name is Rusko Kayengayong, a proud member of the Richmond Progressive Alliance. I'm here to speak against the jail expansion. If you look closer at your proposal, you'll find that the county will be committing $25 million for construction and $5 million in annual operating costs. And you should question that return, is this a really good return to investment? I think not. I want to emphasize the opposition and dismantle the false narrative that the sheriff and others are saying that only a few are opposing the expansion. In fact, a recent poll conducted by FM3 demonstrated that in addition to opposing building more jails, 48% of Contra Costa voters oppose such an expansion, and 34, an additional 34% strongly opposes. The message is clear. The three cities of Richmond, San Pablo, and El Cerrito passed resolutions opposing the jail. Even State Senator Nancy Skinner, Supervisor John Joya, and many others are opposed to the jail. So please, stop this process right now and end the contract with ICE. Thank you.
Rachel, did you speak earlier, Rachel? Debbie Reuter from Martinez?
I don't, I think everything's been said, but I didn't, I, this could have been missed. Oh, I'm Debbie Reuter from Martinez. State Senator Nancy Skinner introduced a budget resolution that would transfer $85 million for jail expenditures to build mental health treatment facilities instead. So we're asking you to support her proposal. Also, I guess, I look at you, and I feel like no one's hearing us, but it's hard to tell just by looking at your faces. All we need is one of you to change your mind, and we talk about that, but it's really frustrating from this side. I'm new to Martinez. I did vote for federal.
Thank you.
Yeah. But I want to vote for you again, and I don't know if I can. I, I like that San Francisco brought their, well, how their process worked, and I urge you to look at that. And I am frustrated with the sheriff. I feel like he has more power than all of us that voted for you. So I don't know what to do about that, but, yeah, vote. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. That is the last speaker card that I have. If there's someone else wishing to address the Board on any issue under public comment, would you come speak and fill out a speaker card?
Good morning. My name is Joel Hila. I'm a criminal justice associate with the ACL
I'm a criminal justice associate with the ACLU of Northern California. We have a letter that we would like to read. Is that all right?
That's fine. It's in one minute.
One minute, right. Try to keep it short. The ACLU of Northern California respectfully urges the Contra Costa Board of Supervisors to reject the BSCC funds for the construction of the West County jail expansion. Rather than using scarce resources to add and maintain jail capacity, the county can and should reduce the need for more jail space by expanding mental health services and its pre-trial release program. According to the county's SB 44 application, 154 people are currently incarcerated in the Martinez Detention Center. The county's application states that the purpose of this jail construction is to enhance behavioral health services and reduce recidivism. The ACLU of Northern California shares these goals. However, countless research and decades of experience has demonstrated that jails and prisons are not well-suited for the delivery of high-quality and cost-effective healthcare, healthcare services. A recent study we commissioned that we just got in May says that, and there's a $10,500 cost savings for providing healthcare services outside of the jail system, and that diversion programs such as mental health or substance abuse courts have a recidivism reduction of 12 to 26%.
You need to wrap it up.
Yes, I'm almost done. Community-based treatment facilities resulted in the highest rates of reduction, which is 8%. And lastly, community-based reentry and transition programs that could also serve as preventive sites of care resulted in $5.20 of returned dollars for every dollar invested.
Thank you.
So all of that to say that, you know,
Thank you, sir.
we believe that the county should invest
Thank you.
in mental health services and that you heed the call of the voters and the advocates, the advocates
Thank you, sir.
to invest in mental health services and prevention services. Thank you all.
Please fill out a speaker card.
Hello, my name is Jane Kurant. I filled out a card for written comment, but I wanted to add something and ask a question. I volunteer in two prisons here in California, at San Quentin and up in Solano Prison in Vacaville. And I work closely, one-on-one, in some cases, with gentlemen, and I have heard their stories. And almost every single one of these incarcerated men have had a history of either drug addiction or mental health problems or abuse in their families. And I would like to ask you, have any of you visited the jails? Have you talked to some of the incarcerated individuals? And have you heard their stories? If you have, I think that if you listen carefully to their histories, that many of these men who, or, and in many cases, women in other, in other facilities, have landed there because they did not get
Thank you.
the treatment that they needed
Thank you.
before they entered the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wanting to address? Come on up.
Hello. My name's Kathy Green. I'm a Concord resident, former Martinez resident. I was held in the county jail here just down the street on suspicion of something I was later found not guilty of. I was dressed something like this. I had been in the city at a concert. I was held in an open area. There was a few other women there. We were sitting, and there was a TV. It was showing a horrible movie with phone sex ads in between. And it was like the middle of the night, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. And I asked, I approached a deputy and was like 10 feet from him. I just politely asked, "Could he please turn the TV down?" No one was listening to it. The other women were just curled up, facing away from it. And he said, "No, you don't get to make decisions." And I asked him, and I said, "Please, is there a reason why it has to be on?" And he, another deputy said, "Get her." And they, three of them jumped on me, held my arms back like this, dragged me into a cell, threw me on the floor, and a great big guy deputy put his knee in the back of my, between my shoulder blades so I couldn't breathe. He says, "Will you be quiet now?" That's after I'd been there for hours.
Thank you, ma'am.
It seems like the person that needs mental help is that deputy.
Just a couple of things. I have no other speakers. Just a couple of things. The sheriff is an independently elected official. We do not have authority over the sheriff or his operation. We only are in control of the budget. So I want you to realize that, and anything that you need from the sheriff, then you should contact the sheriff's office, and I'm sure that he will get back to you. This is not, this is, this is not, this is not, ma'am. Your minute is up. Sorry.
Let me just say,
No, no.
I had an, I made a formal complaint to the sheriff's office. They investigated themselves and found themselves not guilty.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that is the last one on public comment.